The Lee County Board of Commissioners will come to order at this time. Welcome, everyone. It's good to have you here today. We are going to start off with our invocation by Mr. Hoyle, followed by the pledge allegiance, if you will join me, please.
Our gracious heavenly Father, we thank thee for this day and the opportunities we have to be of service to thee and to the people of Lee County. We ask a special blessing for the commissioners, guide them in their deliberations, and give them the strength and wisdom to make wise decisions. These things we ask our Father for the benefit of the citizens of this community who provide for these people in all they do. These things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, you have before you commissioners the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I need to add an item to the consent agenda, the acceptance of donated armor plates for the Sheriff's Department. The item abstract should be there in front.
Okay. We'll make that item H under the consent agenda, acceptance of donated armor plates, and we have information in front of us that describes that. Are there any other additions or changes? If not, do I hear a motion that we approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you very much. Now we'll come to the consent agenda. I might add that there are a couple of proclamations that are embedded in that, that I will, if we approve it as is, then afterwards I'll read those proclamations, which I think you will agree are fitting. So is there a motion to accept, to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Then moved, that we accept the consent agenda with the item acceptance of donated armor plates as item H. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you very much. At this time, let me take the opportunity to proclaim and to honor an employee, Mr. Samuel Malden. And if, Mr. Malden, are you, he's not here. Okay, all right. Well, let me read anyway. We honor him nevertheless, and the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas Samuel Malden began employment with the Lee County Sheriff's Department as a part-time deputy on June 20, 1989; and whereas Samuel Malden became a full-time deputy on July 12, 2004; and whereas Samuel Malden retired from the Sheriff's Department on October 1, 2010, with a total of 15 years part-time and six years, two months, full-time service; and whereas Samuel Malden earned admiration and high regard from those with whom he came in contact with and regard from his fellow coworkers, who were proud to consider him part of the team. Now therefore, on behalf of the Lee County Board of Commissioners and the County of Lee, we do hereby express our sincere appreciation and thanks to Samuel Malden for his faithful and dedicated service to Lee County, presented this first day of November 2010. So to you, Mr. Malden, our hearted congratulations and thanks. The other proclamation has to do with an event coming up in Lee County. It is the North Carolina Symphony, which will be returning here after several years of absence, and it will be at the Wicker Civic Center on November the 13th. And they ask, and friends of the symphony ask, if we would proclaim that day, as is the case also with the City of Sanford, the North Carolina Symphony Day. So the proclamation reads as follows: Whereas the North Carolina Symphony will perform in Sanford on Saturday, November 13, 2010; and whereas the event will be held at the Dennis Wicker Civic Center beginning at 7:30 p.m.; whereas music director Grant Llewellyn and soloist Melanie Wildston and David Friedlander will perform; and whereas it is with great honor to have the North Carolina Symphony return to Sanford for this talented event. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners for Lee County as follows: The Board of Commissioners for Lee County expresses its sincere appreciation to the North Carolina Symphony for this upcoming event. The Board of Commissioners for Lee County does hereby proclaim Saturday, November 13, 2010, as North Carolina Symphony Day in Lee County. And thirdly, that this proclamation be made a part of the minutes of the November 1, 2010, meeting adopted this day, November the 1st, 2010. So, thank you very much for that, and hope that you will all, many of you will be able to attend that performance. It should be quite, quite a fine performance. Under old business, moving right along, I'd like to ask Mr. Downey to come forward and to talk to us about the matters with the planning board.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the Lord. As the chairman indicated, you do have a recommendation from the planning board regarding four out of five amendments that were presented at public hearing at your last meeting. I would tell you, if you recall in public hearing, there was some question about, there was a proposed amendment about cul-de-sac size, and you had representation from the development community. A couple of folks got it and spoke about that. Based on that, as well as unfortunately, Fire Marshal's Office couldn't be here, the planning board decided to table that item and asked staff to come back with more information. So that's not included in the recommendation in front of you this evening, this afternoon. Just a brief refresher, I'm not going to go through these in detail because I presented those in detail at the public hearing, but essentially the First Amendment is to sections, Article 3, and it deals with adding language, clean language that helps clean up what's required when you have changes of use and/or additions to existing structures. The Second Amendment is essentially adding language to the ordinance that cleans up when you have a double frontage or a corner lot, and helps clarify what setbacks are applied. And the Third item, or the Third Amendment proposed, is a language that was added based on recommendation from the City of Sanford Public Works and the Town of Broadway for when you have a new sanitary landfill in the roadway and how that would be designed. And then the Fourth proposed amendment is adding language to our existing standards for thoroughfares, wherein we would clarify that what we're calling courses of existing roads are parallel, US 1, what are essentially acting as service roads, that the same design standards that you have on your quarters now will be applied to these road segments. I would add that the planning board did consider these four amendments, and they recommended unanimously that you do consider adopting these four amendments. Now, pause there if you have any further questions.
Are there questions, please, or comments? This is an action item, so it is before us for approval, and then the city will take it upon advisement and approve it.
Yes, sir. They're hearing, they had their public hearing tonight after you had yours, and they'll have their, the same recommendations in front of them. And I would tell you, the City of Sanford Planning Board also acted to table that item on the cul-de-sacs, in the spirit of trying to be cooperative.
Okay, and say again, that item is going to come back to us a little bit later downstream?
What will happen with the cul-de-sac item is we will take that back to the planning board, the respective planning boards, both the City, County, and eventually the Town of Broadway, and then once they come up with a recommendation, whatever that revised language is, we will bring that back to you all for your final consideration. If it changes significantly enough, we would likely go back to some type of public hearings. So it may be back to some of you for public hearing. That way everybody gets an opportunity to see that item.
Okay, and at the planning board, I'm sure they're going to bring in some fire marshal or people who can speak to that issue, both pro and con.
Right. What has happened, I will tell you, since that time, I've been in touch with Dan Gross Jr., who's been kind of the spearhead for the development community, and been working with him, as well as King Cotton with Fire Marshal's Office, and Bill Rogers with the Fire, excuse me, King Cotton with the City of Sanford and Bill Rogers with the Fire Department Office. And basically, we're just trying to work through the issues. Mr. Gross is going to be working to come up with some questions, and we'll work back and forth.
Okay. Now, are there any other questions, or Ms. Dowrumpel? No, you had some questions.
I did. I would like to entertain the idea to the rest of the board to table Amendment 1. I've had a couple of phone calls from some citizens that were concerned that that might impact their ability to sell some of their vacant property. And I've talked to Mr. Downey, that maybe we just need to get a little bit more time for some feedback on that. We had a good representation of residential developers at the public hearing.
Right. I would tell you, if the concern, and I apologize to Ms. Dowrumpel, because we didn't get to talk to you in the morning, but I would tell you, if it's vacant property, this really wouldn't affect, because vacant property would have to meet the standards of the ordinance per se. This really, these would only apply to situations where you're dealing with existing structures, where you've had a business there and it's changing hands to something new, and/or you've got an existing business where they would want to add on to it. So if it were truly vacant, it wouldn't affect.
Right. Well, the two that I talked to had vacant property, but they did raise the question, though, that, you know, what if, you know, with the economy like it is, if somebody was in a building now and decided to change it, you know, financially, how would this impact their decision to change, to do something different?
Any other questions?
Just, I would feel a little bit more comfortable getting a little bit more information from.
And what about just tabling the package?
Or do you pull one out?
Is it a pleasure of the board, or you could pull that one out, or you could table the entire?
Well, you're gonna, you think that, would it be in your, the planning board's interest and the citizens' interest to go back and have the planning board look at the cul-de-sac issue and clarify any issues on this First Amendment, and just keep them together and bring them back together, or would that make it too complicated?
We can, if it's the direction of this board to send the first one back, we can do that. Not knowing exactly what those concerns are, that might be a little tricky, but certainly it might be worthwhile to pull out the ones that the board doesn't have any issue with and move forward on those.
Okay. All right.
So we'll just table Amendment 1.
All right. All right.
Let me, let me offer that, you table them all that we have in front of us. What I would feel more comfortable with, reading the language and having a specific example is not quite the same thing for me. If, for example, I read here on the second one, I think it was, about the side yard and the rear yard and the front yard, it would, it sounds or reads as if you're simply saying, the side yard is going to be the same setback as the front yard.
That's, that's, that's right.
But it took me a while to get the re, reading the whole. I'd just like the simplified version, is all I'm saying. I'm sure everybody else caught it before I did, but the end of the day, for me, it was like, all other setbacks are the same, but the front and the side are going to be the same. I don't know. I'd rather see them all, though. My preference is two things. One, you got some very simple examples to go along with the amendments, and two, just a note that says you had no, I know we have public hearings, but have you had any calls from citizens regarding these amendments?
Right. And I could tell you the issue of that is, no, we had not, other than the issue on the cul-de-sacs.
Change my motion then, to table all of them.
Table all four, for now, and simplify. That certainly reflects my thinking, and perhaps couple it up with the, when you bring it back, maybe the package could come back together, if that's, if that's timely.
Right.
Okay?
Okay.
All right. So the motion is to table these and visit them at another time when, when things are clearer to us and more simple. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you very much. Okay, the next item is establishing the Lee County Veterans Council, and for this, I'll call on Mrs. Davidson, Senior Services Director.
Good afternoon. I'd like to invite our Lee County Veterans Services Officer, John Sandrock. Join me, please. We have been speaking since John came on board about a year ago now about the possibility of establishing a veterans council for Lee County. We have not had this in the past. Mr. Sandrock was very familiar with this in the Hornet County area. So we bring it for you today to consider the establishment of a county Veterans Services Council, and I'm going to refer to Mr. Sandrock if you have any questions, or if there's anything John would like to share about the council. Thank you, Mr. Sandrock.
Welcome.
Thanks, sir. Appreciate it. What we're trying to do, we recognize the fact that any of these groups and any of the citizens within these groups, of course, can come speak to the board. But all of these groups, and there are five that are recognized in this county, do a lot of various things within the community, both for their chapters and the community. And what we would like to do is be recognized, or have the Lee County Veterans Council recognized, as a way to bring all of these groups together, let them share their ideas and projects among themselves, and then bring that to the attention of the county commissioners in order to help the community and, of course, help the veterans within the community. We saw this established in several counties, but in Hornet County, it's been very, very productive and very, very successful. As a matter of fact, I was just told that they're finishing up the rest of the veterans park, and this, of course, was with all of the veterans organizations joined together to support that, as well as the commissioners. That's what we're trying to do. Well, we have a resolution, which describes this process, but before we read that, before we've got the cart before the horse, let me ask any of the commissioners if they would like to comment. This is an action item, seeking our approval, and if that is forthcoming, we certainly would also like to be introduced to your veteran colleagues here today and have them recognized and thanked yet again for their service to this country. Any comments? Any questions? Is there a motion to approve the resolution? If so?
So moved.
So moved, and I'll read it after we approve it.
Here's a revised that you were given today. I ought to remind you to take the revised version.
All right, there's a motion on the floor to approve the corrected resolution, and I believe we all have copies of that. And let me just ask, I think this looks like a unanimous decision on our part, but not to, all in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Then it is unanimous, and we do approve it, and this is a very fine moment. And let me read the resolution at this point. Resolution establishing the Lee County Veterans Council by the Lee County Board of Commissioners. Whereas Lee County, North Carolina, has enjoyed a close historic and personal relationship with the military forces of this state and nation; and whereas numerous citizens of Lee County have served our state and nation during times of emergency, conflict, and war; and whereas it is important that we recognize these veterans that have served our country and community as advocates for their fellow citizens; and whereas military veterans and their families provide leadership, stability, diversity, and security to our communities; and whereas the future of Lee County is dependent upon the strength of its local communities, which are populated with our military veterans and their families; and whereas it is important for the growth of our county and communities that we recognize the aims, interests, and requirements of our present and future veterans and their families in Lee County; and whereas it is important that we show commitment to our veterans, as they have shown for our state and nation; and whereas each community is dependent upon this dedication and commitment of community leaders, if it is to address the needs and concerns of all of its residents; and whereas we believe that an organization should exist to gather, consolidate, promote, and present the aims, interests, and requirements of our county veterans and their families. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Lee County Board of Commissioners, that it hereby establish the Lee County Veterans Council, that will be an advisory board to assist the Lee County Veterans Service Officer on issuing, on issues concerning veterans and their families. Be it further resolved, the council will make recommendations to the Director of Senior Services, the County Manager, and the Board of Commissioners on how the county can better serve our veterans, adopted the first day of November 2010. So, again, we thank you. We congratulate you on your service to us all, and I would like to ask if you would identify yourselves, so that we hear your names.
I'm Steve Vaughn. I'm the Commander of Disabled American Veterans, Chapter 5, in Broadway. I am a retired Army Sergeant Major and a Vietnam Veteran, twice.
Thank you.
I'm George Williams, retired military of 30 years. I'm a member of the Hornet County Veterans Council, the DAV Chapter in Broadway, and the other chapters in.
Thank you.
I'm Robb McCann. I'm Vice Commander of Post 347 in Broadway, and I've been a member of 44 years.
Thank you.
I'm James Dratton, 23 years of service, retired. I'm on the DAV Chapter in Broadway, also on the VFW Chapter in Sanford. I'm the Commander now of Post 347 in Broadway, American Legion.
Thank you, sir.
Jimmy Thomas, U.S. Navy. I'm a member of the Legion and Broadway.
Thank you.
Rick Holgrove, I live in Broadway, North Carolina. I was in the Navy, now I'm in Army Reserves, and I just returned from Iraq about two and a half months ago.
Well, welcome, welcome home.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you.
Larry Heil, retired Sergeant Major, U.S. Army, 29 years of service, Junior Vice Commander, Chapter 5, Broadway, Treasurer Sergeant Major Association, Fort Bragg, North Carolina.
Thank you, sir.
Lewis MacIntyre, a member of the American Legion, the VFW, I'll name them all, and I was Past Commander of the DAV.
Thank you.
My name is Perry White. I'm a World War II veteran of the Army Air Corps. We didn't have an air force in those days. I'm a Service Officer of American Legion, and the Chaplain at the VFW, and a member of the DAV in Broadway.
Thank you, sir. Are there any more, any more veterans here? Two, two more. Okay.
Earl Ballinger, WW2, Air Corps.
Thank you.
American Legion and VFW.
Thank you.
I'm Don Schreiner, American Legion, Post 382, Adjutant. I was in the Air Force and the Army, and I'm a Vietnam Veteran.
Well, we thank you all and applaud your service. This is a great day in Lee County, and thank you. Did you have something more that you wanted to say? Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, sir. The veterans are welcome to stay. If any of you wish to leave at this time, feel free. Thank you. Nice having you with us, and come back anytime. Okay, the next item is the North Plank Road Water Extension. And Mr. Crumpton, if you wish to?
Yes, sir, I'll handle this one, unless Mr. Pascal wants to handle it. Obviously, we've been working on this a long time, and we are getting close. The city is ready to begin work on, on the water line. They meet tomorrow night for a bid, and hopefully approve the same contract we're getting ready to approve. I apologize that the contract was not ready for the agenda. However, it's a pretty simple contract, and we were trying to move forward without too, too complex of a contract. So are there any questions? Mr. Hall wrote the contract with a few changes from the city, not many, and we're all in agreement that it's a pretty good deal for us. Our request tonight is for the board to approve the grant agreement with the North Carolina Rural Center. This will be accepting the $89,977.05 grant from them, which is a 90% grant. We also need to approve this contract, and thirdly, we need to authorize the transfer of remaining funds in the county's water fund to the City of Sanford, which will be used as part of this match. And the total is $5,200 and some change. So I'll be happy to answer any questions, but I think we've been over it enough.
We need to make sure we get a sign that says, "The Pascal Water Whale."
Well, the motion's been made, and I'm wondering if there's any comment or questions?
I would just like to make, come out, I'd like to thank the city for all their work on this, especially Vic Zar. He did an outstanding job in getting the price of this line down. With them doing the engineering work, they saved us about $25,000, $30,000 on the project, and I think they've done a wonderful job, and we should thank them for this.
I'd like to thank the contractor for giving us a good price.
See, Mr. Odom, you can, you can thank him.
Okay, it looks like.
The other, Mr. O.
Yeah. Pleased to hear you say that, Mr. Crumpton, about the cooperation with the city and their health. This is, this is important, and perhaps will lead to a continuation of cooperative ventures between us on behalf of the citizens of Lee County. Motion's been made. All in favor, please say aye. Aye opposed? Thank you very much. Passes unanimously. Now, we're going to have a manager's report. Mr. Crumpton, do you have some things?
I just have one item, Mr. Chairman, and that is to remind the board members that the second joint meeting with the EDC will be on Wednesday, November 17th, at 6:30 p.m., being held at the McSwain Center. So we've had three commissioners respond that they can be there. I'm sure after tomorrow, we'll get more commitments.
Yes, just a comment on that. I think we, I believe we've all been given, Mr. Crumpton, have we been given copies of that strategic planning? I mean, I've, I've had one.
What you furnished me today, I don't think the rest of the board members have seen that.
Okay. It seems to me like that they probably should, and I know your copy has, your office has a copy. The EDC was asking for our comments on their strategic plan, which is sort of the spearhead of what they're trying to accomplish, and they wanted our feedback on it, and it seems to me like that we should all have an opportunity to give that. Sir? Okay, there it is. So, so you've got it, and you, it's your choice, but if you want to, as I did, pencil any changes or suggestions there, please feel free to do so, and get it back to Mr. Crumpton's office or to Mr. Hoot's office by, they were asking by the 5th, by the end of the week, so that they could take all of that into account. So that would be very helpful to them and help the process move along. Is that all, Mr. Crumpton?
That's all I have, sir.
Okay, then we will have commissioners' comments at this time, and Mr. Pascal, I'll bet you have something that you'd like to say, or maybe a yip, yip, right? Okay, very good. You really have. I was thinking, you know, we lay.
I'll tell you, I've talked to some of the people on North Plank for a guest, and they're really excited about getting one of them out there. I can't blame them. I can understand how it'd be to be out of the water.
Well, thank you for the action that you took to help this come about. That's ins- That's inspired, and we, those people, I'm sure, appreciate it greatly. Mrs. Shook?
I'd just be glad when Wesley gets here and I get back to a normal life again. I want to encourage everybody to go out and exercise your right to vote.
Okay, Ms. Dowrumpel?
Same here, exercise your right to vote, and also, before we meet again, it'll be Veterans Day, so I wish all of our veterans, the ones that we're fortunate enough to have here today, and all the other ones that fought for us so we could go back tomorrow. Happy Veterans Day.
Well, I've already exercised my right to vote.
Very good. And Mr. Kelly, welcome back.
Second last meeting, Mrs. Grober. Make sure everybody does go vote, it's a very important thing to, to exercise your right, and I've enjoyed my stay on the board, and I look forward to, you know, everybody getting repped back up, and whoever that's over, so be it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reed?
I'd like to thank everyone that voted for me.
We're called Landslide Reeves.
Right. No, but I hope we will allow at our, I guess, November agenda, a few moments for Commissioner, what is your name, your name is wrong, for Commissioner Kelly to have some parting comments without interruption.
Okay, yeah, and I, too, would just like to encourage people to please vote. I mean, this is what we're all about, this is what makes this country great, and people should not sit back, they should go and vote their conscience, which is a privilege, and that these veterans who were here today, and millions of others, have fought to make possible for this country, and we should not take that for granted, not for one single moment. So, please do vote, and regardless of the outcome, I think that there are going to still be a few middle-aged, retirement-type people on this commission, and I hope we will, I hope we'll continue to serve the citizens of Lee County.
I'll pick a moment, Mr. Kelly.
Do we have a motion for closed session?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I may if we go into closed session to discuss matters relating to the location or expansion of a business in the area per North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A4.
Thank you very much. All in favor of going into closed session is red, please say aye. Aye? All opposed? We'll be in closed session. Thank you very much.